If everyone would mind joining us. And the flag of the United States of America. Two republics, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Thank you everyone.
Any public input?
No.
The whole business? The whole evening, mattress excitement workshop. But actually forgive me because I didn't prepare for this for tonight's evening yet. Uh, there's been a lot of things going on, uh, a lot of family issues, so. Uh, really not had time to prepare and make an appropriate, uh, uh, report. So.
Table to.
Table till next meeting if we could.
Second.
What's your name? Second of all favor.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. Under the vision, next order is to discuss an act, draft Title V and inspector license application. Uh, should we read it?
Well, first thing is we're gonna change the fee to twenty-five dollars.
Oh, that's true.
I have a couple things. You know why, if somebody has a license and we decide we want to rescind that license, I think a reading statement fee might want to be higher because we have to go through a lot of work to call all the towns and check out how they're doing and stuff before we let them back in, but. I don't see this as brand new, so we don't know how it's gonna go. I don't see us rescinding a lot of licenses, but if somebody gets rescinded, it's gonna take a lot for us to get them back in. A lot of work on staff.
I'm telling you, if it was rescinded later on, they'd have to come forward and then go through the whole process again.
But it's still only twenty-five dollars to let them back in, that's what I'm getting at. So if they get the, I was suggesting if it gets rescinded, the reading statement fee is a hundred dollars. That's all, or something like that. I, I, I don't think we're gonna be rescinding a lot of licenses.
You put that in the fee structure. Uh, we, we could take the fee off of this altogether and just put it in our fee. Fees capable. One of the things.
It'd make more sense if you changed it to thirty-five dollars.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, and then we can add that into it as well. One of the things that I just was made aware of recently was the fee and fee structure. We forget that we are appointed and the fees are set, and we can recommend to the Board of Selectmen what the fee will be, but they are the ultimate, um, fee makers. So when we get ready for the finalization of the fee structure, I would suggest that we just send it over, recommendation to them for what, um, for their approval and go from there. We, you know, it was just an oversight on, on, I'll take the blame, my part. Um, so, about having a good night, haven't we?
I always thought that we could make a fees appropriate to.
That's what I thought regardless of whether it was.
Well, we can recommend at this point. If we were elected, um, you know, we can set fees and recommend that they, and it's just a formality, so.
Well, as long as we're on fees, I was just taking, I was gonna talk about it under the agent's report, that, um, now that we've gone through the regulations, now I want to start on the fees and we've been working on putting together like hour list, so I wanted to give everybody a list of fees to take with it and control the agenda for the next meeting to talk about it. And then yeah, once we finalize, we get it to the selectmen, but we're looking for a July first rollout anyway of the regulations and the fees, so we've got time for it now.
So on this one, we'll just take off the fee for now?
Take off the.
Yeah.
But I, going forward, if it's twenty-five dollars, I just wanna do a reading statement for you seventy-five or something. You know, and if, that's only if it's revoked, I don't know.
Yeah.
Then when it's revoked, this whole project, I don't think anything would happen then. You'd have to stop the whole process here. And then we'd have to feel comfortable, or whoever borrows here, that they would be in compliance. But then we're talking something that would constitute something being revoked. It's pretty serious.
Yeah.
The only other comment was that the second paragraph in the bottom septic system consisting of a single cesspool automatically failed. So if somebody's got three cesspools in a row, that would be a pass. I, I think we need to, um.
Just give a cesspool? I mean, you give her a single? Just put cesspools?
Yeah, 'cause, um, right, 'cause a lot of people, as you know, they, they have a cesspool all by a field, and so when that pass is the cesspool in a field, I think it needs to be the.
While we're on the cesspool thing, in another town, in other towns I've worked with, it's automatic failure, the question always comes up, do I, why do I even have to submit a Title V?
You don't.
You would have to, I believe.
You can do a voluntary and just upgrade the system.
I don't know, but with the Title V, you wanna know, um, all the other questions. And the main thing is, where is the system components? Because I've actually seen components on somebody's, on somebody else's property.
Oh, you're saying where, okay.
Regardless of if it's a cesspool or not, we wanna see some, a full report. I know it's, it's, they're gonna say, oh, why do I have to pay four hundred dollars just to say? Well, we wanna identify what's going on there.
But that's not talking about cesspool, you're talking more for the rents, or, I mean.
Well, you get that question. We're gonna, somebody's gonna come to you and say, I, and that's just my opinion. Oh, I have a cesspool, why do I have to do a Title V?
This is trying to sell the house here.
But they're gonna say, it's a failure, why do I, I'm just gonna go right.
Yeah, but if an engineer's gonna go in there and locate the cesspool and say it's gonna be collapsed, I personally don't see the need to go through the effort. I'd rather them spend the money on fixing the system than, but that's just me.
Yeah, you can do that if they're gonna go straight to the engineering, but sometimes it's just a, oh, I didn't do it, I sold the property because it was a failure, then somebody else inherits a cesspool. And I've, and I've definitely seen that. So I just figured, Title V's are required for all, unless that person actually did do that process of, um, I skipped that and I already contacted an engineer for a car test, we're already gonna get going with that. But I, 'cause I've seen properties change hands with cesspools.
Do you want language in here that says if the system is, the, the process to start repairing the system's not stopped within thirty days, you must submit the report? Or something like that, is that what you're thinking?
Welcome to Title V, really.
Yeah, it is on the Title V, but I know what you're getting at, is sometimes they kinda get around it, but.
Because even on, even on our letters, when we, when we receive a fail, we always tell the person in the, in the letter, no new occupancy as well, because people change hands and then now you're, you're going from chasing that person, 'cause they think, oh, they'll, they'll inherit the two years, and it's really that new person just has to get it fixed right away.
Wouldn't the bank be aware of this and?
Only if there's a bank involved.
But if there's a bank involved.
A lot of times there's no, yeah, they just sell properties.
This should be part of the regs.
You see a lot of those signs that say grow cash for houses.
They're just trying to chase him down, is the problem. I, I mean, just, uh, to clarify, the septic system, we should change it to septic systems consisting of one or more cesspools on a Monday for fail.
That's easy enough.
Yeah.
So I don't wanna say a cesspool, you know, just kinda.
So it's a bonus too, so it took care.
Oh, one or more?
One or more cesspools on a Monday, yeah.
And how'd you say it, that language, did you? You had to mention.
Oh, I said that if the, um, if, if it's a cesspool in the process, well, I said that if you don't stop the process for the repair within thirty days, you must submit a failure to Title V or more. But I, I think it's gonna be hard for us to deal with that, right?
Issue with the homeowner, you know, the Title V.
I know why I was trying to do it, and I understand, but I think it's gonna be hard for us to find those people.
I've actually seen, totally unbelievable, I've seen a leaching area on somebody else's property, and it could have been identified with a Title V, it would have been identified with a Title V.
If they establish property lines, if they didn't, you know, a lot of them, they don't, they just draw a sketch and say it's over there. So, I'm not, and again, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I think it's gonna be hard for us to try and please that. That's all.
Ever comment, but I'll save it till later.
Well, I know, I know, in another time I worked with, we are, I have to say, regardless, it's, we need a Title V.
No volunteers.
We get a little bit of kickback, and the only time we let that go, they say, you know what, it is a failure and I've already contacted an engineer for perk right, let's get this thing rolling. That's the only time. Because we work closely with the assessors, we get a list of properties that's changed hands, and, um, some of them didn't even do a Title V. And they're cesspools. Then what? You're, you're just chasing another person that's already now occupied that.
Right.
Thinking, uh, oh, I have, I have time to fix this now. So it's almost, almost like you're playing catch-up all the time. I just figured, put my two cents in.
Well, that's a very good point, and I'm thinking also this, we need to change the language now on the regs. We have cesspool automatically fails, so we need to say one or more.
I, I'm really, this doesn't even need to be in there, I put this in there just to reiterate, because that's usually like the big thing.
Well, for the first few years, we're gonna have that problem while people are new. Once they get past that, then it won't be bothering you.
And that, this whole paragraph, can we just take and, right out of here, well, that line, um, you can.
That the whole area?
Yeah, that whole paragraph, 'cause, I mean, that actually, paragraph there basically says that they've read and understand our regulation. So we can just get around all of that.
That's the design construction and the Title V inspector's not involved in any of that, so maybe we should just write whole paragraph and then we don't have to get into how many cesspools and.
Yeah, we'll just do that.
Okay with that?
I agree.
Yes.
So that middle one?
Yes.
Ten from the bottom.
And I'm gonna say, going back close, close to top, all licenses are issued for one year beginning July first, um, just 'cause that's when we're gonna start this.
Okay, so that would be different from the others, which is good for us, 'cause it's a lot of licenses to issue.
And then all, all new inspectors will just give a pop of the rights, right?
Yeah, when they come in for the, sure they go all the rights. In fact, anybody who does inspections regularly, we're gonna be getting these too, so.
Sounds good.
The only other comment was down on the road, just like, you vote a health license number, so, we've got a lot of license numbers, so it should be, so it'll be a system inspector license number. It will have a, it'll be like SI nineteen dash one or whatever, just to separate it from all the other.
One, one year and so forth and so on, yeah.
That's all I have.
So did we finalize the decision on, uh, fees? Is it gonna be twenty-five initially, then X amount?
Well, see, we're gonna be talking about the whole fee structure at the next meeting and all the different fees, but, um, I think everybody was okay with twenty-five.
We'd be trying to send it in, it's just.
And then the review is fifty so far.
Yep.
All right, wanna.
We can talk it more when we get to the fees, so it should be at the next meeting, but.
We're gonna, we're gonna make the adjustments and the amendments and we can act on it.
Amendments and then have it been copied.
At next meeting we can act on it, okay. Sounds good, we'll act on that one next meeting. Uh, we will discuss an act, Health Agent FY nineteen, uh, not Stiften, well, this one was Stiften.
So when I was in town hall last week, um, town accountant grabbed me and said, hey, board's gonna vote on, you know, where to take the money from to pay for the FY nineteen to right now, Stiften, and I said, well, you know, it was only if there was money there, and we're only in March right now, so, you know, I think it should wait, but she seemed to think that the board has the money so that we could vote it. So I don't mind waiting, I think it's a little premature to know how much, um, money we get extra. Um, I'll say running the RFPs for the, the trash is gonna run a lot of money, so, um, but it's up to the board what they wanna do, but I'm okay waiting, I wasn't expecting it, so.
Probably easier to do it now than with transfer. Done one. Yeah, um, I, I don't think there's gonna be enough money in, in a fifty line.
Right, it's gonna be transferred.
Come out of seventy.
Come out of two lines.
Well, we got somewhere, we got money in there anyway.
So I just, I want everybody to be aware, I'm not necessarily looking, again, I don't, I wasn't expecting until we waited another month or whatever, so I just wanted the board to be aware that Jim needs us to vote to move the money from point A to point B to pay me.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, not the next meeting, the second meeting in April, we, um, look at the budget and see what line we can take it out of, kind of, with the RFPs and all that to get it processed.
Second. Okay, motion is made, seconded to delay the decision until, delay for further discussion until the second meeting in April. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Thank you. Actually, I wanted to look at tomorrow, if, if you're not busy. I'd like to go over some of the budget. Tomorrow's looking at it today, and I see already some minus lines.
Meet Mrs. Congress.
Yeah, the last closing balance, I, I just wanna get a handle on why we're in the hole on some of those, like, I know you, I don't know why we didn't put a additional hours or overtime for you, which I don't understand why you're in the hole and, uh.
You didn't want that many additional hours.
And you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have been in the hole anyway. We'll, we'll talk about tomorrow.
Yeah, no, hold it, go.
Yeah, it's like minus six hundred thirty-one dollars, that doesn't make any sense.
No, 'cause we were watching that, and we were saying, we were doing overtime instead of overtime, so.
Uh, number seven, authorized expenditures, payroll and bills paid, and we, uh.
Uh, the last couple weeks, we've got three thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars in payroll and eighteen thousand six hundred dollars in bills. The bills, eighteen thousand for landfill paper for trash bags, this is the last bill that we got, and I signed the packing slip when he dropped it off, apparently that was the invoice, we didn't realize it was the invoice, so, um, that's that, and Verizon National Grid, I mean, I'm just seeing it. Which just thrown out there, trash bags, um, that was the end of the, the contract we had with them, so we, we're gonna start putting together an RFP for another round of trash bags. So we're not quite there, we've still got three pallets left, so we're okay, but we figure we gotta start now.
We do still have money in the budget for another order before that happens.
So we're just trying to be ahead.
Yeah, I think the quality's been good, I haven't heard any complaints, so.
Not a one, I, I know, huh? Other than the small size.
Yeah, we do have, I think with the next, we're just gonna get the large size for the small batteries and all the two bags, yeah.
And we did have somebody this week, um, I think Todd was gonna talk about it in his separate reports, they called to ask, they were cleaning up the sides of the road near their house and their neighbor's house, 'cause they said there was a ton of trash out there, would the trash company come pick it up? And like, well, if you leave it in there. She's like, oh, there's a lot, and we're not really sure, and I'm like, well, you know what? And Todd and I talked about it, we have those odd sized bags, that we have a case of, or half a case, of bags that were in between.
Monarch, man.
No, they're clear.
They're clear, but they're, they weren't large and they weren't small, it was like.
That mis, mis run.
'Cause remember somebody got them and they came down, and we went store to store to find out, we're, yeah.
And it was just a, we're in a bad box.
Right, so it was probably when they switched from the large to small, it, it somehow about messed up. Anyway, we told her that, you know, thanked her for cleaning up the street, and we're like, we have some of these bags, as long as they're in town like that, we're just gonna pick them up.
Right.
We can't do anything with those bags, so they came in and we gave them a few and said, you know what, if you come up and you've got more. They were very thankful and basically totally agree.
So we found use for the misfits?
Yeah, yeah, one time I, it's great, it's all about doing something similar to that with, uh, the orange hazardous bags, we have yellow bags or something. And.
Did they do that when you were doing the free cleanup?
Yeah, but they had a, you know.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, you're really stupid.
Well, I haven't seen any posting on it.
It's like Dan and April, I think, right?
Well, whatever, Earth Day is.
Yeah, it's gonna be Earth Day. My fear was that people start asking for them and using them for household trash, but that's a risk with that, I think, I suppose. And if you're watching and whoever did this, thank you for doing that, and, um, if people come in and they, yeah, I think it's a great idea, but I, I fear that, you know, but if they're clear bags, I think that gives us a little, you know, I mean, what's out there? Paper, cans, nips. So, issues deposit on nips, I think. Anyway.
Yep.
We take that. You have any report for us?
Um, it hasn't been quiet, a lot of tolls and calls, though. We do have, last week at the selectmen's meeting, they rescinded their vote to throw away the trailers, and made a new vote, but rescinded the vote for me to move into the old police station, and made another vote that the trailers will be in the new animal shelter. We are moving them from where they are now to the town landfill, which is gonna be the southeast corner. Um, they're going to put up a whole of fencing with a, a gate for me, so when I'm there, nobody's can get to the trash, to the landfill, and we don't have people dumping them on there and not knowing it. And they're hoping to get everything done with the money that we will lose as of June thirtieth, and then we have to, um, get something from DEP, which they're gonna file, and they're hoping that I can be in there by August, we'll see.
That's pretty vast. Did they determine if they're gonna demolish the old building or?
Well, you might as well watch the selectmen's meeting, 'cause once they said that it was no longer gonna be that, selectman Goulat said, oh, I have a highway department on my five-year plan, so I think she has plans of moving the equipment that she, uh, the highway superintendent needs to store there temporarily until they do a new highway direction.
Okay. What about your vehicle?
Any updates?
I did get, um, only one, and that was, what is it, Metro Ford that we use for, and they're talking fifteen, fifty thousand or so. Um, that was, so I can have the air conditioning, they have done animal patrol vehicles, so they know exactly how the bed needs to be and everything. They said for an extra, I don't know how much it was, they would put the thing on for us, they said, well, we do have somebody that would do that, but they do know that the air conditioning needs to be able to go into, so, um.
Okay.
And I was hoping to get more than one to hope.
Yeah, if you got more, more than one, so we have a.
Yeah, we have, we have, so you sent them out.
Yes.
Little bit nice, but, yeah, getting a little late. I mean, you sent them out to three, four?
I sent it out to, I have four that I sent out too, there's two in Rhode Island and three, I can rain him that area, kinda thing.
I guess they're doing well on the used trucks or the new trucks, right? Don't worry about them either.
I have a bunch of things, so, um, in no particular order. Um, I signed up to do the Stop the Bleed seminar at St. Louis Hospital on April sixteenth. Just saying, I'm.
Three, three. Some little bit of coalition meeting.
Yeah, so, um, doing that, um, we're gonna be, already talked about the trash bag, then we're gonna start on that, we're also gonna start putting together the RFP for hazardous waste day, um, start getting all the information together. Question, stable barn permits, so if somebody's got a horse, it's a stable permit, if somebody's got goats, it's a barn permit, if somebody has a horse and goats, it's just a stable permit, but there is nowhere on the application when we say list all your other animals.
I thought there was.
So I think we're gonna need to add that in, but it's still under stable permit.
Still in the stable permit, because, well, you can get me the money that way, but I have to go out and do the stables anyways, so it's not like I have to go specifically somewhere else to have animal, other animals, I write them down and that.
So we wanna do it instead of separate, get them, get a barn permit and a stable, we're just gonna do it all on the stable, we just have to revise the form, if everybody's okay with that.
Makes sense, okay.
Um, there's a little story of an event that happened recently in town, that, um, one of our selectmen was at the event, and they observed somebody handling food without gloves, that person pointed something else to the person not using gloves, and the person's response was, I know it, like, I know I'm supposed to be wearing gloves. Um, it was then said, well, when the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health were one entity, the Board of Selectmen were health agents, but now that they've split, should they be health agents? You know, like, uh, deputy, but obviously, for them to be able to enforce something that they saw, and I'm putting it front of the board, personally, I don't think they should be, but.
For Health, they, like any other person in the public or government, town employee, they can file a complaint. I mean, anybody has the right to say anything, I mean, countless people that are in the food service or happening in the food service industry, you know, that is just supposed to be done, and everybody has a right to say something to the person, and hopefully they'll be like, oh gee, I'm sorry.
Well, that person did go into the kitchen and put on gloves, so.
I'm sorry, I mean, anybody has the right to say something, you know?
I would say, yeah, I would say they could put in a complaint, 'cause we got one, two, three, four, help, and Jim, five, so I think between all of us.
We don't need more.
They, they can make the complaint, well, I would not say we don't need more, but I think that's, it's quite a bit we have, between all of us, we have to, I think.
Okay, I'll pass the information on.
Um, did they identify themselves?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I just, just. See, I don't see a problem with that.
With the, with the selectmen being health agents?
Anybody.
With anybody being a health agent.
Not, I mean, they can mention it if they don't.
All right, anybody in the public can do it.
Well, no, mentioning it was becoming, being a health agent, like a deputy to the health agent, so they could pull out their badge and say, you know, I'm, I'm closing your kitchen or something, you know, I don't think, everybody should have that power, I think it should only be certain people.
That becomes very problematic.
That's.
I've seen it before.
It can become a political tool instead of a health tool, but that's.
They need especially, now that you have a health agent specifically, it needs to be addressed properly and go through the proper channels like any other person would do.
Put it off of the complaint, uh, and then you take the complaint from, you follow up with the complaint.
But, like I said, it doesn't deny them the right to say something, you know?
So it may come up that the selectmen may be looking to have themselves named as agents, which obviously they don't want to have that authority, but obviously, I would hope they'd ask for our opinion, which I'm gonna do, advise them of what we said here, but.
I guess it depends on the situation, if we have a situation that should be addressed immediately or on the spot, if somebody is doing that, without gloves, I don't see anything wrong with that situation, 'cause the guy shouldn't be wearing gloves.
You can talk, you can go talk to a manager, and you say, can I talk to the manager? I just saw this individual grab money, then grab my food, oh, I'll take that right away. And when you make the complaint, you say, hey, just so you guys know, I saw, if you saw a girl sewage, I'm gonna call automatically, call somebody right away.
The time, the time, the time becomes an issue where you need to be an agent, 'cause if it's so serious that the establishment needs to be closed or something like that, at which point, a member of the Board of Selectmen should not be making that decision, it should be the health agent and/or the Board of Health, not the Board of Selectmen, if, if it's truly a health.
Oh, not us to shut it down, so that's, yeah.
Yeah, but if they're a health agent, what authority does that give them?
That's, that's the authority that you would need.
You can do emergency orders to shut something down if it's so, if it's so intimate, and intimate, that there's a public health risk.
Wait, and, and, I'm not Board of Health, I mean, you know, you just, you gotta be, yeah, I, I think it's.
No, I have to say, say, you know, I, I know the health coach, I know, I know the food service industry, you know, I, I, I do know you're supposed to be wearing gloves, you know, and if they don't do it, you can say, you know, can I speak to the manager? Anybody in the public has that right, you know?
Yeah, I think five agents.
But to claim they're a health agent, no.
Right, you're right.
Right, well, that was the question, should the selectmen also be health agents? So, and they're just looking for, you know, what we thought of it, so I'll let them know.
'Cause with that, they come with some specialized training, you're in, they don't have to be, say, certified.
They don't go into the trainings.
Yeah, they don't have to, they're housing ones, living ones.
What does it end, Gary?
There are the reasons that, when I ran in two thousand and six, we had to switch the Board of Health, was to get the politics out of the Board of Health, and that's where it could lead to, like, what, favoritism and stuff, so, I, I would agree to that extent that they should be health agents.
You're 100% correct, it doesn't end at, you know, seeing something in the food service once or a. You're 100% correct, it doesn't end at, you know, seeing something in the food service, once or a, doing a health agent or an agent to the board. It gives free reign of all public health rules, regulations, and policies to enforce, swimming pools, housing, septic, nuisances. Community diseases, that's, that's, that's a very broad spectrum, man.
And we take all complaints serious, so we will, anybody that has a complaint, we will follow up.
All right, I'll let them know. Um, next item, Dyton one oh one. This is coming from Jocelyn Tavargas, who's the director of the library. She's, um, kicking this around for a little while to do this, Dyton number one, which is for people who are new to town. She originally started it to be like a little pamphlet that they mailed to people, saying, here's some information, you know, like, uh, if you got a kid, the Athletic Association, here's the contact, sign up to play baseball. Uh, if you wanna build a shed, here's the number for the building department, just kind of generalized information. But what she's gonna do now is on Thursday, April twenty-fifth, at six thirty, in this room, in case you haven't seen, uh, it's an open house where a bunch of department heads and committees for the town meet in one place and are available for people who are new to town and want to know what we do, or those who are not new and don't know what we do. If you're affiliated with a nonprofit group in town and needed members, they're more than welcome to join us too. It's meant to be friendly and informal. I think a format of setting up people around the room with quick introductions of who we are and what we do at the beginning of the night would be good, and then we can have residents make them. If you have things you want to implement or handouts you want to bring, that's a good opportunity to know what we do. If you aren't interested, or can't come, but have handouts, I would be glad to bring them and make them available that night. She's also looking, because the census is coming, they set up shop and recruit for jobs that night also, so, um. It's a Thursday, April twenty-fifth, at six thirty PM, right here. So, obviously, we don't need to make a decision now, but, uh, just throwing out there, we can talk about it by night.
Have some representation.
Yeah, so I figured if somebody might wanna be here.
We can also have some handouts and stuff. We have our recycling, is it right?
We do. So what else we have? Uh, fee schedule we already talked about, but we're gonna just hand out, this is what, um, we're working on. These are suggested new items that we want to add to the Board of Health fee schedule. These are ones we've kicked around at different meetings or we've talked about in the office, so, um, we're not gonna discuss it now, it's gonna be at the next meeting, but you get time to look at it. Oh, curbside textile. The mailings have gone out to the post office, but they haven't been delivered yet, as far as anybody in the town knows. Right now, we have still scheduled for April first start, but depending on when the post office delivers, it may get pushed back. So we're waiting to find out when the post office delivers. That was, as of today, that was the update.
Got five days.
So, um, what else? We did have an incident in town a week ago, that a woman was doing some cleaning, and somehow some rings ended up in the recycle bin. Got put outside, up front, got picked up by Borges. And the woman came into us, and she was distraught, saying, well, she was here before seven thirty in the morning, um, distraught. And, um, we told her where Borges, we tried calling Borges, there was no answer, we told him what to speak, he was gonna be on, to try and catch the truck. I told her that even if he didn't take from the truck, they always just dump it right into the incinerator, kind of like, they, they dump it, it's a seven-day process and it takes some time. Well, she ended up getting a hold of Borges, but he'd already dumped it, but the load hadn't been sorted yet. So he went and identified where the load was, and like, where in the load her stuff was. And she actually found her recycled box that was there, and found the stuff that was in the box with it, but the rings weren't there. So obviously, when the box got crushed, stuff must have fallen out. But he, um, he did an amazing effort to walk her through and find as much as he could. So I just, um, wanna make sure he gets, um, credit on camera for doing a good job.
Very good.
Yeah, above and beyond.
We sold our first tag today for bulky item pickup, which is the week of May twentieth to the twenty-fourth. So you can come down to our office and buy the tags, um, at any point up until then. What else we have?
Five hundred and five.
So we have a, a property in town where, um, I'm kind of struggling on, um, a, a little bit with it, because it's kind of a little different. It's the red barn at the corner of Main Street and Williams Street. Everybody familiar with it? So the owner is, uh, wants to call it a subject repair, has submitted a letter saying that there were rooms in the building that were used as bedrooms. And our building inspector has been in to the building and witnesses, there was a kitchen in there and a bathroom. There is a cesspool on the site, so they have sewage, there was a water line, it was coming from across the street. But the building had been used, and there was people sleeping in it at some point in the path. So what he's looking to do now is call it a subject repair, because there is no place on the property that is over a hundred feet from the weapons. So they can't do the reconstruction. So because two rooms are used as a bedroom, he wants to use it to call it a two-bedroom house. And before I went and said yes or no, I wanted to hear the Board had any direction they wanted to send me in, or.
What did the file have?
There's nothing in the file.
That's the one that's main, main Williams?
Yeah, the court voted in the main, when you spot the Williams, it's spread out.
No, they just redo. It's nice, but that used to be a house?
No, I think it was sleeping quarters for fieldhands, my farmers. Actually, I don't think there are Ozzy, that's what it was.
Yeah, and the, in the old days in town, most of the farmers had migrant workers who stayed in a little shed, if you will, or some little structure.
This was actually quite nice, it had a wood stove, everything was almost like going back in time. As you went into the space, it was all left the way it was. If I didn't see it, I might be a skeptic too, but it, I've only read in books, but I actually saw it. So, so I do, I do believe there were people living in that.
Any evidence of any septic?
Yeah.
Old septic system up there?
And the water line fed it, as Todd said, came from across the street from the farmhouse.
So it had pre-existing water and, and septic.
Well, I'm inclined to, to say it's a repair, but I just wanted.
Two-bedroom with a D restriction.
Yeah.
They had more utilities than, than most.
Right?
Had, because one of the farms I worked on, didn't have all that.
Uh, D restrictions and floor plan submitted with the file.
Is everybody okay with calling it a repair then?
Okay.
Because I just, this was an unusual case, and I wanted to float it here.
So it happened, you, you just for living.
Well, no, he submitted pictures and a letter, and I've got all the evidence I think I need to support.
The variances would be, what, just the weapons, you think?
Um, separation of water table would probably come into it. And possibly distance to property line, if he's trying to stay out of the fifty-foot wetland, but we don't have the wetlands delineated yet, so. So there's issues to work out with conservation.
Does it matter? Probably doesn't matter, it was seasonal.
We don't have a provision for that, so.
But with the repair, they just go with a D restriction.
Thank you. And the last item, um, where did this come from?
The Board of Selectmen, that is the Board of Health Policies and Procedures Manual that we were sent back when we separated. And, and going through, looking for stuff for our fees, I can cross out, and I'm like, oh, yeah, we need to address those. So when we first started, we were like, okay, we'll get to that, we gotta do the regulations now. So we finished the regs, and think that it should be in our future too.
That's just, that's just the, um, that's the one that. Yeah, but that's, that's every, um, CMR.
State, state regs.
Yeah, that's already, that's.
They exist somewhere.
I'm, I'm glad you brought that to our attention. Uh, and we worked off that, kind of as a template. That, that has all a reference to go back to all the CMRs. What's about labeling the food? That's more like processing.
I think, I think if, if, um, you have someone, you know, former, that has no idea about public health and rules and regulations in the state, I mean, that, that covers a lot of.
So that just needs to be in the computer and?
I think so.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's online, right?
Okay.
Update the.
We'll take a peek at it.
Well, I just wasn't like, ah, because I know Mallory, that's the Policies and Procedures Manual for emergency management. And they're looking at revising it, so I wasn't sure if that was something that you guys needed to review also.
You were working on.
But we, we ended up coming up with, um, that's funny, because here is, uh, some of our files. And there's one part where it talks about food labeling, and that's for processing plants. So this is just like.
There's a lot of getting finished.
Yeah, it's just, it's a lot. You're gonna see our regs are gonna be a few pages. And this is always, this is, this mentions like the housing code and the food code, but you don't have to have a whole, you can go back to, or you can look into. And if somebody had a question, you could say, here's where to find this.
I thought that was in there when I first, I saw the references to.
Yeah, but somebody actually took like pages out of those codes and plastered it right into that. Instead of saying, see this code, they actually put this code.
Because the issue is that those codes change every so often, I mean, the food code changes. Now, that whole thing becomes outdated.
But a reference to the code.
Because you reference the code.
That's good, that's a good point, because it's not in there now.
The state on their, the newer website they have, they want the links, I'm pretty sure most of them actually say will not stay updated. So you know it's the most current version. And if you want official records, you can call, you know, pay the money, and the state will print it now if you, um. I think you'd be better off to have a couple pages reference, you know, a, um, sanitary, you know, housing, things like that, you know. Boy ten C R, you know, to, you know, just list it, just where you go for the, you know, the, um, we use some picture, whatever.
And this has alcohol, wood burning one? When we make our manual, I was gonna work on that manual, once all finally, we have everything. We'll have a binder, and you just have the tabs, and it's like, um, wood, wood first, um, the, um, the new regulations we have for Title V. Anyone that we make up will, or Doc, will put in that manual.
All our, all our libraries know it's all one spot, yeah.
You can have it yourself, for the food code, the swimming pool, but that's more for you to go in, take a look. It's an easy reference.
The merged food code is one hundred and four, or maybe so, you're not gonna.
All right, so the last item that I forgot about, I had posted for it. Had a woman come in today that wants to open a smoke and bake shop in town. I'm kinda glad you were here for a smoke and bake shop.
Smoke and bake, okay.
So, um, she wanted to know, um, and where, which direction ahead in that, and, um, I know obviously it's a zoning issue for that end of it, but I, I didn't know where we were at from the, the health. Do you have anything specific?
I would, I would like to give her an application for her, and, and show her, write down what she was looking to do.
An application for what?
Tobacco.
She already has a tobacco. It's a convenience store that wants to.
Get rid of a convenience store.
Liquor license in a convenience and, or the retail store, and just be like a vape lounge slash.
Oh, so that's different than a retail establishment now, maybe. That's completely different. That's a place of assembly now.
If, if it's a smoke, if it's not a single standing structure, they're gonna have to have significant ventilation and filtration. Because you can't have any, um, odors or smoke or chemicals in the bake infiltrating the other businesses.
What about the employees there for smoke-free work? I know, we gotta talk to Marilyn.
So you have fire alarm services, and you have the, um, possibility of smoke poisoning within the structure.
All right, I, I would refer this to Marilyn.
Can't you put down in writing what she's proposing to do?
She's still.
In writing, yeah.
No, but she's still, I don't know what she wants to, she's just thinking about, hey, I'm thinking about doing this, because the convenience store is not exactly as profitable as the.
There's some things you'll have to have proper signage with the adults only. Besides that, I'd like to know the, the scope of what she wants to do. And then, we can answer some of the questions, but then we might have to talk to Marilyn.
I told her she may have to come, I told her to come to the Board tonight, and she said she wasn't gonna be able, so she's probably gonna come back in two weeks.
Something in writing would be good, so you can imagine now.
You can have a smoke and bake, bake shop, and there's money on it, like friends and ton or whatever, but you don't smoke in it. That's, that's fine. But if you make it allowed, you smoke in it, and it's a place of assembly, it changes everything.
There's one I inspect now, and when it comes to the samples.
Yeah, but she mentioned samples.
My, my self-working marriage, the samples have no nicotine.
Really?
And they must charge. So we, and we have proper ventilation, we have a, they have a unit above them, um, no, no nicotine, and, um, they charge for the samples, even if it's a dollar.
All right, well, I'll let her know then that she needs to fill in the, a rough scope, or just an, a rough.
First, you need to tell her to request the writing a zoning determination for the zoning enforcement officer as priority one. Then you go on to step two.
Yeah, just give us a scope of what she's proposing, and we, we can answer some questions for it. The, the, Marilyn, how to go to person.
Based on what everybody's saying here, I don't know if it's gonna be viable for the location that they're at. So, um, I got enough that I can, we can, we can see her in two weeks if she comes back, so.
I don't wanna get too technical, we've got a rest, two restaurants in that building.
Yeah.
Both have ancil exhaust systems in them, which create negative air pressure in each of their tenant spaces. So they're automatically gonna draw from this new one.
So we get some, some issues, we get, I get enough that I can talk to her, or Jim and I can talk to her. So I just wanted to know if anybody here had any issues with it, so. All right, that's all I got. Sorry to take us home, those won't need us. We can start at six fifteen. We're all playing.
It's not like Colorado.
It's about two years ago.
Yes.
Right, we'll need to clarify. Okay, a couple correspondence, one is the, um, person who lost her rings, it was her thanking Borges. And the other one is a, um, community meeting, or like an informational meeting, or another marijuana dispenser.
Just a correspondence, but, yeah, um, notice of community outreach meeting for One Connection Corporation. Notice hereby given that One Connection Corporation will hold a community outreach meeting on April eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, at the Dyton Town Hall, nine seven nine Somerset Avenue, Dyton, Mass. At six thirty PM to discuss the proposed seating of an adult-use marijuana establishment at two hundred William Street, Dyton, in accordance with Western Road Chapter ninety-four G, and Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission's regulations, uh, nine thirty-five CMR, five hundred. Interested members of the community are encouraged to ask questions and receive answers from company representatives about the proposed facility and operations.
Recommend to them that they be here.
Thursday. So it's, it's, uh, Thursday, April, uh, six thirty PM. Brenda Woodcock, she just wants to recognize trash recycling. Foes further desire to help me in every way possible. I mistake these tossed out two rings with my recycling, and didn't notice it until the next day. These rings were given to me by my, by my deceased grandmother, and had great sentimental value. Called Peter Borges to see if there was anything I could do. He said it's probably long gone, I said, thank you anyway, and accepted the fact. A few hours later, he called and said the truck hadn't transferred to Connecticut yet, and was still in Bedford. Furthermore, he said he looked through the pile to identify the street location and had the pile put aside. We were able to go there and look, and even though we found our broken box of recycling, we were not able to find the rings. I can't believe what this man went through for a complete stranger, and needs to be told. Thank you, Borges Brothers, for coming. Sincerely, Brenda Woodcock.
Thank you, Borges Brothers, for coming, sincerely, Brenda Woodcock.
That's it.
Three, uh, one of these hours, yeah.
All right, so these are the, uh, first, take one.
Twenty-two cents, I was in here.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve, to March thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, a four minutes.
Second.
I wish it been second, to two minutes of March thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, I oppose, in the case. Although I was absent, you can make a motion.
Uh, yes, Chairman, I make a motion, uh, approve the minutes of March twenty first, two thousand nineteen.
Second. The motion made, second, to approve the minutes of March twenty first, all the favor.
All right.
Opposed, although power saved since I was absent. Motion dismissed. Chair? Anymore?
Two.
Volky item curbside pickup, the Board of Health is scheduled to annual bulky item pickup during the week of May twentieth, two thousand nineteen, to May twenty fourth, two thousand nineteen. Be following the same schedules, trash pickup, bulky items must be out promoted at seven o'clock A M. And we have a list here, uh, items that may be placed for curbside pickup on disposal, with their associated fees. Reminder, if you have a refrigerator that is painted or, uh, picked up, that the doors must be removed. Uh, tags may be purchased at the Board of Health Office, the Old Town Hall, lower level, one one, one one Somerset Ave. A separate tag is required for each item that is to be disposed, insured to effect the tag to each item intended for disposal. Any questions or for your list of what's accepted and the fees, uh, contact the Board of Health Office at seven seven four eight seven two zero nine four three. And reminder that hopefully in the next couple days, you'll be receiving a, uh, flyer and a pink bag in the mail, uh, from Waste Zero. And it is for the Texas Tire Recycling Program, this is free to residents, um, and actually helps take some, uh, good recycle, recycle material out of the trash. Program collects a wide variety of materials, including clothing, bedrooms, and children, coats, jackets, shoes, jewelry, purses, hats, toys, uh, pictures, mirrors, blankets, pillows, sleeping bags, drapes, curtains, tools, dishes, pots, pans, glasses, and backpacks. And regardless of the condition, uh, they, they can still be taken and sorted at the facility and, and definitely all, all used appropriately. So again, you'll be getting a pink bag in the mail, a little flyer that describes the program, and if you need more than one bag, you can, uh, get to the Board of Health Office, or call the, uh, number, if you leave, if you, uh, put a bag out, they will, they're supposed to leave a, uh, employee.
Very good, good job. Anything, can you turn anything off? Ten, Washington, to a jury, first.
Second.
Washington, ninety-second, adjourned, all the favor.
All right, all right.
Opposed. Night, Caleb, good night, everybody. Have a good weekend.
Good.